All right, you ready? Anybody ready? Okay. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the June 30th, 2020 voter selectmen meeting in our own room. Now, in keeping with that, we had some good news today. The first time the deaths in Massachusetts were zero. So everybody... And that doesn't happen by accident because people are wearing their masks, you know, paying attention when they go into place, social distancing, all this stuff. You keep doing that, and everybody's gonna be fine. When you get out and you don't do that, and by the way, there's plenty of examples of that in the country right now, it skyrockets. So let's keep doing what we're doing because you're doing an awesome job, Massachusetts. Uh, okay. Uh, let's call the meeting to order and roll call, please. Oh, wait, we need a court clerk for town. Uh... Boom. Julie, she's got the stuff.
All right. I move Julie as court clerk for the evening.
Okay, uh, go ahead, second.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying, okay, so it's four, zero, one. Did you vote against that, Alan? No, okay, five, zero, zero. Okay, all right, Julie, can I have a roll call?
Yes, all five selectmen are present, as well as town administrator, Derek Sullivan.
All right. Pledge allegiance, we get to stand in front of our flag. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a lot smoother than we did.
It's a lot smoother than we noticed that. I assume we were like all over the place. Hey, we don't need to know where they're at. Announcements, Alan. Um... I'll do the next one. Okay. Uh, Jim, anything?
Announcement, announcement, um...
No? Okay. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Ken, Ken, um... Ken Buckland sent us a little notice, I don't think he's read it, about was the lowest, um...
Sorry, tonight.
The lowest returns on the census. So everybody, and I didn't need to pay to give a plug to get people to return, um, their census information. Does it help in getting dollars, um, to us? Here in my hand, and what people would have, and where your accounts are, and their books, so I guess that would be what I have to say.
That's a good one, because that is huge. If they don't fill out the census, we're not gonna get the money that the community deserves and needs. Okay, so please fill out the census out there. All right, Peter?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Jim said, you know, this is money we've already paid to the federal government. So, you know, to not fill out the census form is like saying to the federal government, yeah, you can give it to Sparks, Nevada, or, you know, Preston, Montana. I think we'd rather keep our money here if we could, so please, fill out those census forms. Go online, literally takes about five minutes to do it.
Do we have any announcements?
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, citizens comments, is there anybody here to speak to the board this evening? Nice to have this back. Come on down. Come on down, grab a microphone, yeah, yeah, you. You're up. Come down, grab a microphone. Uh, make sure you speak right into it, otherwise we won't hear you. Especially with masks on, you know?
Right. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me, my name is Maureen Dargan, and I am here representing Trevor Watson. Trevor owns Trevor's at 144 Onset Ave.
That's actually on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll call you, we'll call you when that comes up.
But I actually want to say, well, we're...
No!
But that was good practice. So you're doing good.
And nobody else used that microphone, so they don't have to sanitize me to do that.
Board comments, Alan.
Okay, Jim started off, I was notified by CIRPET about the census issue. Uh, it's more than just money, it has to do with all kinds of different grants, but also the different, different things you can qualify for, different things that you don't qualify for, et cetera. Wareham is the lowest of the 27 communities in the CIRPET region as far as the census report. Basically, it's simply, it's people, get off your ass and fill this out. This is extremely important. It's gonna affect everybody, whether you're poor, whether you're wealthy, it doesn't matter. So please do this. That's number one. We also had a meeting, I think Peter was there, Jim was there, about the trash issues. I was there basically representing Don Trash Wareham, and also the Community Events Committee, with that's available, having funds for advertising, science, et cetera. I'm actually working on some banners to put up on the light bulbs. I worked on that today. I noticed that because people physically at the entrance to the Onset Ave Saturday, I noticed not very much trash being left behind. It still was a little discouraging to see people coming up with their coolers, et cetera, stopping, and at least taking their trash and putting it into the big belly barrels. Some of them, of course, are trying to stuff pizza boxes in their work, but I don't understand why, if someone can bring it in, why they can't put it back in their cooler to take it home. It's gonna be discouraging. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, what comments?
Um, I guess we can take it up with, uh, the ladies on the board. I just, um, halfway through the year.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, there's, you just gotta pull it close. Pull it close.
Do you have your mic on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you gotta speak close because there's a lot of background noise as a result of the way they're using the microphones. So speak close, uh, I just got a notice from somebody who sent me a text saying there's a lot of background noise, and if you speak close, it's okay.
Uh, just to piggyback on what Alan was saying, uh, you know, it was a good meeting, there were a lot of people from the Onset Ave Association there. Uh, Al and Linda Gay from the Community Events Committee were there. And, you know, basically, uh, what was discussed was, and the harbor master, Gary Buckminster was there as well, Director of National Resources. And he, uh, for people who hadn't been familiar with the way the trash was, uh, back in the days when we had barrels there, he gave a pretty graphic description, and then subsequently sent out pictures of what happened when we had barrels up, which is everybody dumping their household trash. You know, they were a magnet for people to just get rid of stuff. It wasn't just trash from the beach that was causing the problems by any stretch. It was the household trash coming from the renters, and so on and so forth, the people who didn't wanna bother trucking it to the transfer station, or pay ABC to pick it up, or whatever. So, I mean, I think, once that, you know, information, you know, got out there, uh, it was clear that carry and carryout was still to be supported, and then it turned into an issue of education and monitoring. And the OBA has really stepped up, uh, they've got a bunch of volunteers that are gonna be down there doing the education, doing the monitoring. Uh, they know not to be confrontational, not everybody you tell, please don't leave your trash on the beach, is gonna be too receptive to your message, and they know not to get into it with people. But I think it was really productive. And, uh, I'm glad, you know, the events committee's stepping up, Onset Ave Association's stepping up, uh, these two selectmen stepped up, and I think it was a really good meeting.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. I'm sure I've said this earlier. When we take our oath of office, we, we, I think, just wanna be clear. We say, well, uphold the mass constitution, and, you know, abide by the charter and bylaws of the town, right?
Right.
I just, I just wanna, you know, reaffirm that to myself, and, um... So although there's no technically real way to force people to abide by the charter, we took enough to do so, and there's an expectation we follow it. All right, and, um, that's all I have to say about that.
Well, the charter is the same as state regulations for us. They've just given us a special, yeah, so, yeah.
But there's no method of enforcement.
No, but you're right.
Beyond, we said we would and we should.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to express what I should do about.
All right, Julie, anything? No? Okay, let's, uh, let's move on to appointments, reappointments, and interviews.
First one I have is Sandra Hammond to be, um, appointed to a member of the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022. Mrs. Hammond is here. Would you like to speak to us? Hang on.
Uh, we can ask Richard for one, but no, we don't. We don't have the list, uh, we have constables' appointments in there, and we didn't list them all.
None of them are listed on the agenda.
Oh, the names? The names, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't.
I don't think that's a problem.
I didn't.
So, uh, as long as Jim's okay with this, I know that he was working on this, so we'll talk about that. Let's take care of the show lady first. Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
Well, I'm Sandra Hammond, I've lived in town for many, many years, and I haven't really been involved in much in the town, other than the fact that I worked in the high school for over 30 years. So I was involved with communities there, and I would like to continue to be able to do that after retirement.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
I just have a comment, her nickname was Hamminator.
Now that we've got her going, she might be a prime candidate for something else.
Very well regarded and very well respected. And actually, I, when I took my first job, I worked for the Hamminator.
Yes, she did. Many years.
You taught in town, right?
Yes, in the high school.
What'd you teach?
What did I teach? I taught English, and I was English department.
Oh, boy. Very good. Still seeing possibles here. All right, great, uh, can I have a motion, please? Motion made by Jim, seconded by Judy. Any discussion? Uh, oh, I can do it, hey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and unanimous, five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Boy, that's so much, I feel so much proud.
The next one is Christopher Conti for the Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Conti, you want to step in?
Christopher Conti, come on down.
This is a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm pretty good. So, um, a little bit of background about myself. I moved to Wareham, uh, seven years ago, 2013, from upstate New York. Um, I was in upstate New York for about 26 years, working for Kodak, and, um, now another imaging company. And I moved back here to help my aging parents. Uh, they're getting old, my car gets dementia, and I want to be close to them. So, um, so I looked around for a place, and we found Wareham, we liked the town, was above Wareham. Been here for seven years. Uh, we've been to the zoning board for a permit, um, for a canvas shop, I'm talking about those marine canvases. And so we've been through the whole process with the zoning board, and, um, we're able to get a special permit to, uh, put the canvas shop there. So, um, so I thought I had time now, I'm still working home, and, uh, I was going in for a plan to be, um, to be there.
Okay. Might as well give yourself a little pitch and tell everybody where you are.
Wareham.
The canvas shop.
Oh, right, right, remember how we near that tax line, right?
There you go, all right. See, mine's well. Since you're here. It's always nice to get business a little bit of boost.
I almost wore my shirt, but I thought it might be too much.
That's fine. All right, any questions of the board? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
We move that Christopher Conti, 2614 Cranbury Highway, Wareham, be appointed to, as an Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Okay, go ahead, Alan.
Second.
Are you all set? Oh, seconded by Alan. Okay, made by Judy, seconded by Alan. Anyone have a discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstaining, unanimous, five, zero, zero. All right, thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Yes, your paperwork will be available in the selectman's office tomorrow, and once you get back, you can go down and see the town clerk and get sworn in.
That's good, thank you.
Using Mr. Venese's preferred oath.
I just, you know, I just had to get that clarified in my mind.
Aye.
And next is Robert Blair to be appointed as a member to the Wareham Art District Commission. Is Mr. Blair here?
He's not here.
It's a reappointment.
Okay, um, I'll move that Robert Blair, ten Barlow Avenue, West Wareham, be appointed as a member of the Wareham Art District Commission for a term to expire no later than June 30th.
Motion made by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous.
And the last one, um, is also a reappointment. Angela Dunham, 40 Oak Street, Wareham, um, to be appointed as a member to the Mine and Forest Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2025. I saw a move.
Okay, motion made by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, five, zero, zero. All right, lessons and permits. Uh, now you can come up for Trevor, to Trevor Watson. There you go. All right, so I just have one question. You serve food, right?
Uh, just a little bit of apps.
So you're doing appetizers and, uh, what you call, alcohol?
Yeah, beer and wine.
Because it is, it is relevant, because as it stands right now, as it stands right now, you, uh, you have to serve food in order to serve alcohol.
Yes.
Because if the governor doesn't allow it, we don't have any license.
You have a permit to serve food.
Yeah, you have a permit to serve food, I know she does, right? You have a permit.
You got a common vic license?
You got a common vic and a...
Um, sorry, I'm just here for Trevor.
You don't have a common vic?
Does Trevor have the common vic license?
Just gotta have a common vic if he has food service.
I think people are pretty sure they don't have people or something else. I don't think they have.
That doesn't qualify.
How did you rule bakery?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I need to break it for you, stop.
No, he serves hors d'oeuvres, I do know that.
Yeah, I don't think that's common.
That's the question, we have to go back to December to see what we have to, uh, put that.
Well, we have to hold this off, or a vote is subject to.
So why don't we confirm whether they have a permit to sell food or not?
Right. Yeah, because if they don't, you can't, you can't serve alcohol already. So we couldn't approve this at this point.
Can't we just go outside and call him?
Uh, yeah, can you do that? Can you go outside? Okay, we'll hold it. Go outside and call it, and if...
If he has it, take a screenshot and send it. Okay, because we need to see it in writing.
Okay, that's awesome. All right, that's good, that's how we'll handle that. Next up, an application for Pepper's Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Bar and Grill, 2885 Cranbury Highway, for change of manager.
The application is in order to change the manager to Eva Carrera. All of the documents are...
And has Cory come back, or is it subject to the court?
Cory... I'm sure it came back to you. Who made the motion, is subject to the court? I think Cory requests it here, it's fine.
Okay.
So everything's in order.
All right, good.
I'll move the application from Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Bar, Verlin Bar, 2885 Cranbury Highway in Wareham, for change of manager.
Second, please, Alan. Motion made by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and unanimous, five, zero, zero.
Yes, we need to go back to those constables.
Okay, uh, next up would be discussion.
The constables.
The constables, yeah, let's go back to the constables, good idea.
Okay.
Now, let's have a conversation, Jim, what is, where do we stand?
Well, when I, I went through them, you know, all of the applications there.
Can you pull that a little closer, just so we know?
Down, maybe, go take that. And we had six people. Wait a second. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people. If I went through it correctly, that did not serve any, um, do any services in the town. So if they're not doing services, do we really need or want to appoint those? Now, of all the others, they said they did do services. Some 50, 75, 14, 75, 100, 6, 31, 14, 110, 25, 16, 12, but I think that might have been, that's 1,600. That might have been what they did the entire year in all the towns. But I don't know. And that's, um, the Terrells, those two of them. And Richard F. White, 32. Um, but none of them made remittance to the town of 25% of their civil processes. And that's, um, that's under, you know, chapter 262, section 8 in chapter 41, um, I think it's 95A. So, um, I would, I would make provisional appointments for everybody who returned what they did, pending a court story, a good court, you know, court story background check, and also remittance of what they owe the town for the services performed in the town. And, and we already have, um, some paperwork that the town had built up over the years, for remittance, quality constable remittance form. And, uh, you know, we should crawl through the chapters under which it prevails, and which they should. And, um, you know. So which, once they, I'd say we provisionally appoint them until July 30th or something, I don't know, someone help me here, and then, um, pending, pending a court story, and also a remittance of what they owe the town. And if they don't, if they don't...
They hold it. That's fine, we can hold them.
Could you just hold them, they don't do it, that's all.
Oh, the names?
Yeah, the names, so I can pull out the ones that, you know...
This is what I came, came down with, so, um, they should check from your office, and then the ones that I don't mention, they should send a notice out to them and say, did you by chance forget to tell us?
Okay.
Let's give them a fair shot.
Okay, that's good.
So I have Cofflin, Blair...
I'll get you in a second.
Coletti, Taylor. Devlin, D'Esso. Foley, Morse. Go ahead, that's all right.
D'Esso?
D'Esso.
Ascenso? No.
Well, D'Esso.
Okay, yep.
Foley.
Yep.
Morse.
George.
Correct.
Yep.
Two Terrells, Christie and Robert. And Blair.
Hang on.
Richard F. White. That's what I came with.
Christie and Robert Terrell and Air Bay Bondon.
Richard F. White. So, again, please check to see if my... Going through their, um, materials that was sent to us is correct for those who I have zero for services in the town. That's on. Um, and I just, I, I think, you know, we had 21 or 22. And, um, and again, you know, it's not that many dollars, but, um, 25% of a couple hundred services, a few bucks goes in the general fund, it's supposed to. Yeah. Chairman, I agree with selectmen, we just want to make sure on the motion for you to, or to serve, or handle, that we do it the right way, so we don't get there. Well, how about if we use Richard for that? Seeing as he's here. Hey, Rich, you're on!
Hi, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sorry, I like them, I'm not, uh, no offense. The, uh, it's easier to not make an appointment than it is to undo an appointment that you've made. My recommendation would be that, uh, for anyone who's appointed me not certain of it because of my payment or financial questions, that rather than approving conditional on some other subsequent event or denying them because they haven't paid, postpone action on it to, uh, the next meeting, give them a chance to pay up or answer, or whatever it is they have to handle that back. Because otherwise, I could see someone coming back and say, "Well, you know, you appointed me, now you have to go through all the removal process."
You're not responding to them, maybe? Yeah, that's fine with me, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to...
Yeah, the removal process is a pain if you read the charter, it's not like you just show up one day and say, "See ya," or something like that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No, I just wanted to clarify with Jim. Are you suggesting that, that there, these appointments of the ones that you read off would be June 30th, 2021? No?
Well, we, we try.
Right.
No, we're gonna wait, no.
Not all of them?
Yeah.
I mean, it's also the court, court story, so it's both.
Yeah.
Remittance of, it's a fund, and that they owe the town, and, um...
Okay.
With court story.
Go down.
Just a question to Rich. Uh, if we have no, nobody authorized to serve for the town, because that's what we do, what that we said?
We have an elected constable, don't we?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, you know, they surely don't have a poll.
And I can't say I suspect the question, because it wasn't...
Didn't have a...
I suspect it, but I also assume, with all the risks that come with that, that, uh, that the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, the deputy sheriff's, would be eligible to serve with an American. So it's not like, you know, law or...
In fact, they probably do more than anybody else in town.
Yeah.
They just cost more than anybody else.
Okay, just gonna make sure we have it.
Okay. Uh, so we'll skip that, and we'll move down to discussion. Oh, yes. You're, you came back in. How'd you do?
Yes, um, he thinks he had us one, um, and I have a picture of it.
Yeah, can I see? I'm telling you about two seconds. Yeah, show it to Rich, Rich knows what a common get looks like.
Yes, my eyesight's going.
You want my glasses?
Good retail practice, yes. Do inspection, too much. Yeah, this, I don't think this is it.
It's not.
But I, I have something to tell you.
Okay, all right, then go ahead, tell me.
It sounds kind of exciting.
Tell us.
If you take a look at chapter 138, section 14, that's, it's gross.
Okay.
Uh, that's the section of the law that deals with granting special licenses. And, uh, while, uh, the young lady was out getting that information, I went back, took another look at it, and there is no reference in here to the necessity of having a common vehicle license in order for you to grant a special license. Uh, what it says, I'm reading. I'll just skip over the impertinent part. Uh, in a city or town, we're in the granting of licenses to sell all alcohol beverages and lines, unauthorized under its chapter, special licenses to sell lines and all beverages only, or other of them may be issued by local licensing partners to the responsible manager of any indoor or outdoor activity or enterprise. So it's all, it has to be an activity with the responsible manager, and, uh, the common vehicle is not part of the...
But at this point, on a COVID thing, you have to be serving food. That's the only rule, right?
Correct. I mean, if I can read out the...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Um, this is from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission? Hold on, Jim, one second, he's reading something.
Food establishment inspection.
That's just an inspection.
That's the Board of Health thing, right?
Yeah.
It's not the like...
So food establishment license from the Board of Health.
I'm just wondering how law would know to go up and inspect it if...
Yeah.
If they, yeah, they didn't have the license.
And I would assume they also have food handlers.
They got food handlers, too. Better have safe, served safe, too, imagine.
Looks like a good report.
If they got a common vic license, and the state guidelines say, please note the establishment doing an offer, seated table food that is prepared on site under retail food, and are allowed to open in phase two, um, table service of alcohol. So, um, I, I, it's a slippery slope.
Are we in two or three now?
We're just starting, three soon.
Three, right?
We're still in two. We're in two, we're the second part of phase two.
Okay. And then alcohol is not till phase four.
Right, box.
Soon we get there, right.
Which we don't have any.
We don't have any box. Well, just, just the, like the Legion, maybe, Redmond.
Well, those are club licenses.
Right, I don't think they can.
Those are fraternal organizations.
They can't, I wouldn't even have to open up the service right now, can they?
Go ahead, go ahead. Here's the lottery of it, you can grant these special licenses, but it sounds like that was the governor's orders, they might not be able to use them unless they have a common vic or a license.
Well, is it that they have to have a common vic or is it that they have to serve food? Because those are, one is inclusive of the other, but it's.
Does it say, does it say? Is the intended service of food that is prepared on site under a retail food permit?
Are you charging the food?
Retail food permit.
She has a food permit. Sure, no. We get that from the Board of Health.
It's on the inspection.
Yes, well, she definitely has one because I know they have one.
Food, because it's prepared on site though.
Yeah, didn't you say that they were open?
It's not prepared on site.
He's just having small.
You need to speak.
You have to go onto the microphone, please.
He's just having small private events, it's not open to the public, if that matters.
Well, it does matter.
It doesn't.
But I don't think we can still do it right now with the, with the rules.
It's not a jurisdictional thing. You know, presumably if, if the board granted this license, off the establishment goes, they still have to comply with Board of Health rules, gubernatorial orders. So, you know, if you're implying you grant the license, that's within your jurisdiction, it doesn't mean you're giving them a get out of jail card for everything else that they have to do.
Yeah, I think that's probably true. I mean, I don't have a problem with, we've given them licenses before and they're asking for one, two, three, fifteen, how many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen days.
They're up to, they can have up to thirty in a year.
Thirty in a calendar year.
So that's not the issue.
So between three and ten, so I don't really have a problem with giving it to them, but I, you know, you've got to know that you got to follow the governor's rule. So he's going to have to figure out what the governor's rule is and follow it. Because otherwise, he would assume some liability and I don't think he wants to do that.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable until I see a common vic license saying he has the permission and the right to serve table food. Because that's what, unless you can show me otherwise, what the governor's dictators, I'm just not comfortable with it because there's a lot of other places. The bar, the bar still can't be used, it can be opened, but it can't be at the bar. You just can't serve booze, you have to be seated and serving food.
Yeah, there's no bar per se, there's just high top tables, they're all.
People kind of mingle and talk and, so it's just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, finish.
I'm good. Okay, Al.
I've been dealing with a bunch of restaurants and, you know, the BFW, et cetera, back and forth for the state. The problem you have right now because of the governor's decree and the way it's set up, the Board of Health is the enforcement agent for everybody, no matter what anyone faces. And under this, the Board of Health would have to come and inspect the business, it would have to be a plant, it'd also one day license of how people work, anybody working there has to have a mask and all, that's the paper and everything. So before he can do this, the Board of Health has to come in and okay it.
Yeah, and tables are going to be six feet apart, the whole thing, I mean, there's a whole set of rules.
But even if that's done, the Board of Health has to be there to say yes.
No, she, they might be better off with a dessert license. You know the dessert license that they have for beer and wine? Because, I mean, that seems to be what they're doing.
Whatever will satisfy, what the governor has stated is necessary, I'm fine with it. But it has to be done and they have to pull some sort of a term of a license that I can see that protects us and protects the public in a sense. I'm not trying to be difficult, it's just, the whole can of worms over and up here and I don't know, that's all I have to say.
All right, so hold on, so what's your pleasure here?
I don't think we want to be Yarmouth.
No.
No, we don't.
So what's your pleasure?
Of course, Yarmouth, Yarmouth was a little different than us. If we were to grant this, we would say, go ye forth but obey ye governor. Yarmouth said, to hell with ye governor, do what you want. There's a pretty big distinction there.
There's a big distinction.
As far as that goes.
They really did tell the governor that it's pretty much.
Yeah. So.
So, does anybody motion, a motion or what? Where are we going with this?
Would you do one with the, making sure they need to get the approval, the Board of Health or?
Yeah, they're gonna have to get the approval from the Board of Health, I mean, obviously. If we approve this, the Board of Health's gonna have to go in there and approve everything they have, anyhow.
Just want to make sure.
And what we can do is hold the licenses back until all that's done.
I don't know if they're, if they've passed Bob's report, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, I know that. Bob's report is pretty tough.
Can you tell me the date on that report, please?
It's signed eleven, seven, nineteen. Eleven, seven, nineteen.
Yeah, I mean, how often are they going to respect anyway, it's not like they're going to get ten times a year.
That's when it's around November sometime.
Yeah. I mean, I could, I could see doing it conditional with a hold until Board of Health signs off, I think. And if they can manage to get Board of Health down there before this weekend, then all the better.
I'm okay with that, too.
Jim?
You know what?
Because if we don't, if we don't hand it out, then if we don't get the Board of Health, then they don't get.
Right, and if you get all the paperwork in order.
Well, they'll miss the application.
It's nice to, it's kind of nice to have everything in front of you, these things are supposed to be done thirty days beforehand and not like the Tuesday before the weekend. So it puts us at a disadvantage, puts you at a disadvantage, because you're going to be running around trying to get them done. I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, the rules are rules.
No, I understand, so Trevor was going to just go to the Board of Health tomorrow morning and speak with, it's Bob?
Bob, yeah, Bob Eathier.
Or Patrick, okay.
All right, so what does anybody want to do here?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, just, there's a difference between a common vic or a license and a food service license. So the statute itself does not require a common vic or a license. It sounds as if, and I don't have the text of the governor's order in front of me, but it sounded as if.
He has it, it's not taken, you got to have a food service.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. It sounded as if you have to have a food service permit.
Which he had.
Which is different from a common vic. So.
Whatever they need to legally satisfy, if they have, whatever they need to legally satisfy, if they have it, fine. If they don't, you know, it has to be table service and blah, blah, blah. So Trevor.
So, you know, whichever way the board wants to go on, you know, sign might be, but if the board order approved this application, that doesn't mean that they're going to open up until the Board of Health has approved whatever it is that you've got planned. And if Mr. Eathier or the board says no, then it doesn't matter if this board.
And they're responsible for the food service permit besides.
That's right, that's in their jurisdiction. That's their permit.
Yes, if I can add a little bit of background here, you know, I've known Trevor for a while. And back over the winter, I suggested to him, look, instead of going for these thirty, you know, one days or whatever during the year, you should apply for a seasonal license. And he explained to me that he had hired an attorney and so on and so forth, but for whatever reason, the attorney has not gotten that work done yet. So, you know, I think at some point, it's going to be who, Trevor, in the process, once he gets away from these one days, I mean, he's going to have to have a common vic anyway. So, I mean, if he wants to come back for anything more than these events and so on and so forth, he's going to have to have the common vic. So I think he probably should look towards that at the very minimum as a long-term investment to get that, so he has it in place when he finally gets around to doing seasonal alcohol.
Okay, so are you going to make a motion?
Could I ask a clarification question, I'm sorry. Is it Ms. Darden?
Yes.
Yep. Can you tell me exactly what happens on July third? What if, you said they were private parties?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not entirely certain, I would rather you speak with him, I mean, he's going to go to the Board of Health tomorrow morning, it would just be, yeah, private parties, twenty people, beer and wine, appetizers, and, you know, but whatever you want him to do, he'll do, he just was hoping.
So he's serving only the beer and wine, and did I hear you say, or somebody say, that some of the food is brought in?
He would do that if, if you did not want him to serve the food, I mean, he just really would like to be able to open this weekend, I mean, it's just a seasonal.
He has to serve food in order to serve the alcohol.
Okay, yeah.
That's the way to do it.
Right, no, I understand.
You know, it would be nice to, I know the Board of Health signs off on it, if we're providing the licenses, it'd be nice to see the layout and to ensure that, I know the Board of Health does this, but that should be all part of the application also, like we have here for El Marachi that Mr. Sullivan's working on.
But that's not a one-day license. One-day licenses, we've never done that for one-day licenses.
It's still, it's still under the current provisions. They have to follow the same rules, don't they, as far as spacing?
No, one-day licenses are a little different, it's a special license, I'm just, I'm giving rules.
Well, one thing that's interesting is like, unless I'm mistaken, isn't the majority of not all of the service taking place outside?
You still need the spacing.
Yeah, you still need the spacing, you're correct about that. But in that light, I think that gets us away from the, a bar inside problem, which is, you know, now we're talking to governor's spacing a little bit. Because if we, if we step this back into phase two for outside, then I think once we resolve the food issues, they're good.
I have in front of me the one-day license, blah, 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 signed by Bob Eathier. Trevor has made some changes, including spacing all tables six feet apart. He has written down all alcohol as opposed to beer and wine. And there is no liquor indemnity agreement?
As I understood it, Cassie sent out his insurance.
I have the insurance.
You have the insurance, okay. Because that was something else we were waiting on.
Right, we have that, but.
So it's all alcohol and not just beer and wine?
From Bob. That's what it says.
What's it say on the application?
Asking this report to go there.
Well, the Belt Department can't grant them more booze than we do.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but that's what's crossed off on this, on the form that goes to us and it's signed, it has to be signed by Bob Eathier. And he signed it, there is no liquor indemnity agreement, there is a check, there's a business certificate, there's department revenues, copy of the permit, so they must have it. But someone has checked all alcohol, so we can't change what it says.
The liquor indemnity would be if they're running on our property.
Right, right, that's why.
Yeah, but we do that, yeah. But we can't change what it says on the form, I don't remember what that X.
Application, one-day permit, yes.
Says all alcohol.
Yeah, because the Board of Health has to sign this as well, so it says all alcohol, so they're asking for an all-alcohol license, not just a beer and wine license, so.
That's on the one-day application.
This is the application, it's on here. So, that's the case, so I don't care, I mean, make a motion, somebody make a motion one way or the other, we'll get this figured.
I mean, what is it exactly we're waiting for, before we can hand these people a license at this point? That's, that's what we better, we better determine that before I think we're making a motion.
Make sure that they have a permit to serve food.
Okay.
As for the, you know, what I go.
As for the governor's order.
Right, and that's all we're trying to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all in shape for that, okay, I'll make a motion.
They do, that's, they're permitted from the Board of Health, they do, not a common vic, but that Board of Health.
Yes, they have a permit.
Under the Board of Health, the Board of Health, let's put it this way, is the key person, key agency, if you will, for all the COVID-nineteen stuff. So if I did Yarmouth, the Board of Selectmen voted one thing, the Board of Health is still doing the, their charge, so. All right, that's not.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you saying this would just be a straight motion to approve then?
It's signed by Bob Eathier.
Is counsel thinking satisfactory?
Maybe.
All right, just make a motion.
It's your business, I mean.
All right, let's have a motion, please.
Okay, will we approve the eighteen one-day licenses? Trevor is at one forty-four Honsett Avenue, where the dates referenced on the agenda.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by.
Is there a subject suit? I thought you were going to make.
Well, we don't need it because we know, we know they have a permit for, because it's a one-day, so we're good to go.
It's not in there.
And subject to the governor's order.
Yes, okay, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Also, if it's subject to the Board of Health and the state.
Board of Health and governor's order, okay. Okay, subject to Board of Health and governor's orders, okay, all right. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Yarmouth. All right, in with discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The halls abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, we're still kind of struggling ourselves to figure out what we are doing in concert with the state. It's a new world out there.
It is, it's a really.
And thank you for waiting while it turned halfway around.
It's a whole new world.
Happy for, thank you.
It's really difficult.
I'm not trying to be difficult here.
No, no, I know, Jim.
But this is for this weekend.
Right.
And it's supposed to be thirty days ahead of time. I mean, it's, it's sure exciting, we have a lot of stuff to go through to make sure it's done.
I'm sorry, I have to, you know, going back in time, if I could, Jim, I have to say that approximately eighty to ninety percent of the applications we get are well within the thirty days.
I realize that.
And people, you know, it's the last thing they think about, you know, people plan a wedding, they'll get the wedding dress a year ahead of time.
Thanks for not making Jim happy.
That's okay, I mean, they look up for eighteen licenses.
Yeah.
And I just had a lot of questions on them.
That's fine, which is good, give us some guidance on how to go forward with this stuff.
Okay, discussion and appointment of the Wayham Redevelopment Authority. As we know, Wayham is not on the Wayham Redevelopment Authority, so we need to add someone to that board.
We have to appoint two people.
Yeah, you can reappoint me.
Before you get into that.
Because I couldn't even pull a meeting last week because.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before you get into that, if you have a young lady, I don't know what she.
Who are you?
Hello.
Somebody's even wearing, I'm from the Chili's in Wareham, but.
We already got.
You were nice, so that's why I'm sorry, so I couldn't be here, but I was, I decided to try to make it.
Oh, okay. You're all set.
Okay, perfect, so there's nothing that I have to.
Now's the thing you have to do, you can pick up this paperwork in this selectman's office.
Perfect, well, thank you so much.
I thought it was a nice meeting.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
All right, what were you saying, Peter?
Actually, I didn't do a meeting this week because.
You're not appointed.
Because technically I'm the limbo, so.
All right, so.
Tomorrow, don't you?
So we have.
Got tomorrow's meeting.
All right, so let's talk about the discussion and appointment of the Wayham Redevelopment Authority. Go ahead, Al.
Well, the particular position there and stuff really requires someone with, you know, a background in development, finance, et cetera, so on the board right now, I'm not going to step up to that too much. So I would say that Mrs. Whiteside would be the idea person to do this at this time.
Okay.
Mrs. Whiteside has debating skills, I would like to say for the record, though, that when this authority first got going, we had somebody who then wasn't a selectman, but was rather interested in the goings on coming along, and that was Selectman Minis. And it was kind of funny at times, because I knew running meetings very loosely, Mr. Minis would have a question or something and it kind of turned into public comment times. And Mr. Minis was interested and was very helpful.
helpful.
Well, I, I appreciate that, I know Judy's interested and I'll give her something to sink her teeth into, and-
Besides us?
No, you know, it's, it's, it's an active board, a lot going on, and I'm busy with what I have going, and, um, I would just be getting too, uh, spread out. If she's interested in, in being on the board, I would support that.
Okay, I have no issue with either one. Any of us.
All right, so somebody make a motion then.
I'll second that.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, so now we have to put Peter back on if we're gonna, uh, if we have to-
Yeah, I can still have him.
You want paperwork? No, probably don't.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Peter to the redevelopment.
Okay, motion made by Jim to reappoint Peter.
Seconded by Alan.
Can I, can I, Joe?
Seconded by Alan.
No, you can.
Uh, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, so you guys obviously know you gotta get someone in and all that stuff, and, you know, we'll have to do the paperwork in the office because it's not in the office.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I know, we'll get to that. All right, so next up is 48-hour business, and we do have some 48-hour business.
There's a request from, uh, Don Trash Wareham, and I'm gonna read, um, the request into the record.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Patrick, for Benham, and writing to you as a member of Don Trash Wareham, we are requesting that you add an item to the June 30th agenda as part of the business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to posting the meeting. Although we usually request agenda items well in advance, there are special circumstances at this time. As you are aware, on Saturday, a meeting took place with members of DNR, BOS, DTW, OBA, and several citizens to discuss the increasingly serious trash litter issues on the beaches, particularly onset. Don Trash Wareham has just requested and received a grant which will allow us to coordinate an educational and promotional component to the community effort to control and mitigate the problem. Signage will be a major part of our new Keep Our Beaches Clean project. Therefore, we are requesting permission to place signs on town property on beaches, parks, playgrounds, and in areas where visitors and residents will be clearly aware of them. Don Trash Wareham has placed signs in these areas in the past with the selection's permission and with much success. We request, as we have in the past, that the signage permission be given immediately and extend to after Labor Day when the tourism decreases and beach use and litter becomes less of an issue. Thank you for considering this urgent request, and we hope that our work of the town and other volunteer groups will be successful over the summer. I have the application and, as a founding member of DTW, I signed it, so I will not vote on this issue.
Okay, Alan?
Uh, just to clarify, uh, when Nora made the statement, it says that they have the funding in place. What's in place is the original application, like a lot of people have, for Community Events Committee, of course, this year we have virtually no events, so there is no money going out anywhere. But we did approve $1,380 for a community events committee to go ahead, so what will have to happen is, if they're, if they need anything over that $1380, they'll have to apply with a separate application. Just gonna make it clear that it's not all pre-approved, because it's a little misleading the way it's worked.
All right, so, and could I have, anybody else have any discussion about this?
I also cannot go into this as a founding member.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, um, one of the things, I think we did this before, uh, when Don Trash Wareham was looking for more than 30 days, we actually gave them two straight 30-day approvals because under our assigned by law, or policy, or selectman's policy, one of the two, we're only allowed to go in for 30 days at a time. So I guess I would make the motion to grant two consecutive 30-day, uh, signed permits to Don Trash Wareham.
Let's just extend it to 60 days, maybe easier.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, so you made a motion?
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Peter, seconded by-
Karen.
Karen.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Jim. Okay, uh-
So I just, I just feel like I have a discussion here.
Yep, go ahead, discussion.
What kind of locations would you like?
They, they have the locations here.
Well, they, yeah, um, it's going to be at the top of the stairs at, at all of the entrances to the onset beach, okay?
Well, that's-
And, um, there is going to be, yeah, I'm sorry, it was late, uh, there's an information table going to be set up on Saturday and Sunday. There's a meeting tomorrow for all of the volunteers, I think it's tomorrow, to have volunteers to sign up for two-hour, um, volunteer stints, if you will, for each of the locations. And, um, where the DTW is, uh, getting bags and wrappers and t-shirts and all sorts of good stuff. Um, and there's an ad that will be in this week's, uh, Wareham Week, which is very colorful, half-page ad, um, so it, it's, it's good stuff, and, and it's, it's very, I think you were at that meeting on Saturday, right?
I was.
Yeah, okay.
The details aren't really there, and it's good to get the-
Yeah.
News out, where it can, you can carry out, and, um, you know, see what we can do.
Okay, I think it's a great idea. All right, uh, so we have a motion on the floor, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Two.
Okay, so it's, uh, 3-0-2, 3-0-2. Okay, next is the Town Administrator's Report, please. Oh, no, you have anything? No, you have nothing. Did you have something on the 24-hour?
No, no, well, I've got, uh, because I've been tasked with the El Mariachi stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so you have-
The TA report.
You want to go on the 24-hour stuff?
Yeah, it could be on, on Saturday. Um, but this is the license maintenance and demification agreement, so, actually, it's, uh, it is unsigned, and there's, for part, we'll go back in there. So actually, I should probably cross out June 2020 instead of July.
Yeah, totally.
But, um, when it comes through, so this gave the permitted activities, uh, you also saw it described the licensed area. I'm also looking, in meeting with them today, I also was wondering whether we should do, um, a little bit of almost a chain off area that goes right to their doorway, so they can have one staff person there, because they've got seven people to the, uh, to the outdoor seating or the indoor, and just so we're not having people sort of sneaking in there. But, um, barriers will be put, the jersey barriers will be put at the front and the back. We're going to do it as a town, we have them on hand.
That's great.
Yeah, makes sense. And, uh, they will chain off, uh, some of the areas, the sidewalk on the opposite side will be left to general public that can walk back, so there's knee grass back and forth and across any of us. Uh, the, one of the big questions on this is, we're trying to help the business when there is a fee section, and you don't hear this from me too often, but I would say you do it for the, the bubble or a dollar, what have you, a nominal fee, and if this becomes an every-year something, uh, to do this, and then, we'll figure out what's a, what's a fair price for that.
Yeah, we could waive the fee now.
Right.
Under the circumstances, yeah.
So, then we just put, you know, zero, I don't think we need, do we need an actual, uh, exchange of a dollar, Rich?
No, you could have told.
Yeah, so maybe we do it for $1 just to, to sort of compensate it.
Yeah, some, some compensation.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, uh-
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, on the, um, layout here, you're talking about what I call the alleyway, right?
Yes.
Okay. And what's happening with the building that is not housing El Mariachi?
To the other side there?
Yeah.
Is that the abandoned one?
No, that's where the sidewalk's gonna be open, or actually, where you see those, uh, they extended the lines, you know, you those, and that sidewalk would be open, and there'd just be basically chain, um, on that side, keeping people from-
That's an abandoned, I'm, I'm concerned about the abandoned building being a hazard to anybody and everybody, and so does this show that they're far enough away?
They're-
I mean, you know, it's-
I, I think we're in good shape with that.
Okay.
You know, it's funny, I've been, you know, I go different places and, uh, you know, up in Quincy, you know, they've, they've got tables pretty darn close to each other. Uh, I look at it and I shake my head and I say, no way in hell would I wanna go to that place, but, you know, there's clusters of people there, uh, they're not paying attention, uh, so, you know, I'm glad that the Town Administrator has, has worked with us and has come up with, uh, a scheme with, with the owner that will protect the public, but allow them to make some money, you know, while dealing with this virus.
Yeah, there's Mr. Menard out there today, Mr. E. here, Mr. McDonald, myself, we're meeting with them. We did make suggestions to alter what they've sketched on here, to put the cement barriers further on the back end, so that you don't have people driving up into there, so we'll do further, um, a further blockage on there. And then, if they'd like to expand, because I think they can fit more seating, but they're also having issue, issue getting servers and things such as that, that they come back to us and, uh, if they wanna expand any, any more seating, so.
Go ahead, Alan.
As everybody knows, all the restaurants are under extreme duress, trying to try to survive. Um, and certain restaurants don't have the ability to have outside seating. Our sidewalks really don't allow it because of, you know, uh, basically, you have to have three plus three for wheel, you gotta get down, everything else that goes on. So anything we can do within reason that the town is indemnified, and, but at the same time, the restaurant has a chance to get back to somewhere near normal capacity, you can provide wine, so you have a restaurant that, say, has 100 seats, you build a restaurant for that capacity, the equipment, everything is based on 100 people sitting there, I mean, you end up with 40 people sitting there, it's virtually impossible to make any money and survive it. So, this is something that we need to do, again, as I've been trying, is, you know, try and get businesses to find ways to help them out, and to sit there and charge them extra money for all this time is just the opposite of what the actual fecal try.
I agree. I just, um, I think, I don't wanna put words in, you know, Attorney Bowman had said something about being, uh, I think Attorney Bowman had said something about being, um, named as co-insured, or was I mistaken on, and I didn't see that on the insurance policy. So I, I just, I just was following up on that, and, um, I, I could've been mistaken, so if you could, please, uh, Mr. Stewart, go ahead.
Yeah, for Mr. Stewart. Uh, yeah, uh, Selectman Manis, that's correct, or was recommended, is it in there? And I believe it's in there.
I'll, I'll be, I'll be insured as things we do, but town Wareham is always indemnifying that insurance policy, and else there's no reason for it for us.
I think you're talking about the, the certificate number that we're listed, the additional.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty diligent about checking for those, I don't think especially our retired members wanna go back to work to pay off judgments.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the, um, kind of Wareham granted temporary outdoor seating all alcohol license to be consumed on the premises to L2 Nasei Inc., DBA El Mariachi, Mexican restaurant, 207 Main Street, Wareham, NAS, photo 571, manager Jose Lopez. On the following temporary premises, approximately 48 by 20 feet, outdoor seating area surrounded by jersey barriers located next to the premises. Area consists of eight tables, six feet apart, each table has seating for six. The license is granted pursuant to the Governor's order and is effective through November 1st, 2020, or until the order is rescinded, whichever is sooner, and will revert to the original licensed premises on that date.
Okay, motion made by Judy, seconded by aye. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 5-0-0. All right, awesome.
Thank you very much, I will be very happy to help, but I appreciate your support.
Town Administrator's Report, please.
The next item we have is, um, just, it was just a list of the regulations recommended for the Board's review and adoption for the beaches, and it was more of a bullet point, if you will, and we received this from Mr. Buckminster, who obviously has been all over the trash and the beach issues, and probably nobody gets more frustrated than, than he and his staff are right now. Um, but you'll see that they're going through the, the lines, you have no lifeguards on duty, no open flame fires are grilling. We did have, uh, at least one family come down with a, starting with a short charcoal grill to barbecue. You can't do that, it's not allowed on the beach. Uh, no glass bottles, no overnight camping, carry-in, carry-out trash, no littering. Uh, this fine is up to a $3,000, it looks like, so, uh, I don't know if that was right, it might have been a decimal point change. It's worth some real anger, but the, uh, no dogs or horses allowed, no smoking allowed, I believe that's one of our Board of Health regulations already on the, on the beaches.
Yeah.
No alcoholic beverages, use of illegal drugs, or marijuana, um, each open dawn to dusk, no vehicles allowed on the beach. Okay? Uh, but it's, uh, just bringing up for the Board's consideration, I tried to find our policies and things on, on the beaches, and I, I haven't found a formalized one yet.
The, uh, fire departments would not authorize the fires on the beaches, or the grilling on the beaches, either fire department.
Right.
Um, and I would suggest, only because I know what happens, that item six, that would be dogs, horses, or any other-
Animals.
Animals, because people have donkeys and goats and all sorts of-
Other than service animals.
Other, yeah, other than ser- no animals other than service animals.
So no dogs, or, or, no dogs, horses, or any other non-service animals allowed. Perfect.
Yeah, otherwise somebody's gonna bring a guana down there or something.
It's already violated, isn't it, dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a violation. But this is just to sort of ratify it so that they can say to everybody, okay, here's the list.
I think what they're looking to do here is to get signage up, so that, so that, so the guy towing his grill to the beach, maybe will look at the sign and take the grill back to his car before he goes down there.
No, I seem to remember most of these being, when I was in the state, so it's not our rule and everything.
Like, some of the other beaches do the, no, no ball playing, you know, kite flying, you know, so, but Gary, Gary doesn't, Gary didn't get that top line.
They always allowed us to have kites and stuff, and they just, this is the stuff, basic stuff, no glass, nobody, and they always had glass on the beach, like, even though the sand is glass. It's not the same kind. All right, so could I have a motion to accept this or adopt this as-
They moved.
Okay, motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Hearing me?
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 5-0-0. Nice job.
I don't think I made a motion, I seconded, no?
You, you made a motion.
I made a motion.
Yeah, Judy, oh, I'm sorry.
And he's there.
Okay, Judy made the motion, Peter seconded. I thought it was you, I thought your hand was up like this, so I thought it was you. You haven't, you've been quiet, you've just been raising your hand.
Let's go.
All right, next up would be, uh, you all set?
Yes, Joe, well, this is officially the, uh, last day of our, our fiscal New Year, so happy fiscal New Year's Eve.
Liaison Initiative Report, please, let's start with Alan.
Uh, as we know, most committees are still meeting, but just barely starting right now. The Governor, of course, today announced phase three will statuteize sixth, um, but As we know, most committees are still meeting, but just potentially starting right now. The governor, of course, today announced Phase 3 will statuteize 6th. But, I'll just read off what's not going to open until Phase 4. Amusement parks, water parks, festivals, concerts, parades, and similar large gatherings or gathering places will not be safe or allowed until Phase 4. So, my effort to try and assist water users with something financial or opening is basically not. I just sent Patricia off a note explaining unfortunately that there's nothing the town can do for, it's completely out of our control. It's a little discouraging that we can't, you know, help people or do something, but we try anyways. I just want everybody to understand that we try. The other piece is, you know, we're doing the Boston Market, you know, for the photo housing and stuff. I'm expected to hear from Representative Keating, hopefully, in his office, within a week to two weeks. We have to do this through HUN, out of Washington, so we're actually in the process of doing just that. And I'm also asked to make sure whatever the pluses and minuses are of moving out into either the benefit of Brockton area, I want the effects to be both ways, because nothing's free, there's probably not some effects good and some effects bad, so, I'll get everybody the information before we make that decision to move.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Wow, you've drawn tonight.
Yeah, I don't have the meeting of Lieutenant Governor until tomorrow, that's why.
Jim? Yeah, we have a, Happy Marian Day, and we have a Tuesday's meeting tomorrow at 5:00. Anybody interested? It's a Zoom meeting. Get in touch with Jay McGrail, the Marion Town Administrator, he'll give you the info, you can get online. And also, we've been meeting here in town with Town Administrator Sullivan and Wesleyan Sampson. And Joe Benedict, who's also on the CMW committee, came in, and most of the time David did, but he had a conflict. And so, we're putting together a proposal, or actually, Smith and Weston's doing, Weston and Smith. Oh, what? In Sampson, Smith and Weston, I don't know where I'm going there. They're putting together a proposal that I think we want to put out for an RFP, just to look at, for possible curbside collection. Carver may be joining us or may not be. They voted yesterday to allow the town administrator, they actually voted yesterday to look into and to put out in the RFP, and they've been at two or three of the meetings with us, because they're in the same boat, you know, as far as the transfer station closing. The door's not shut on that, but we're looking at our options, we want to get some prices and cost it out, and I think it's moving along well, going well. Mr. Sullivan, what do you think?
I think it's, uh, it's doing, it's moving along well, we've got the, we've scheduled the meeting from August 18th, I believe, we've requested that.
Yes.
That meeting. We should have, this way, I think we're going to have the best information possible to make informed decisions and bring it forward to the public. I think that's, that's really what all of our jobs are to do, this is that, it's not an easy situation, it's a big change for everyone, and I appreciate the hard work that Selectman Ethea's put in.
And like you said, it's a shock, because since 19, the mid-'80s, we paid nothing, for, basically, nothing for trash removal, unless you had a private hauler. So, it's going to be a sticker shop, but it'll be savings on the curbside end if we go townwide for the, you know, for the commercial pickup curbside. Again, we're still looking at transfer station, possible operation, maybe we'd run it and sell stickers, and maybe we'd do an intermunicipal agreement. Sometimes it's simpler, sometimes I think it would be simpler to do the operation and sell stickers. But that's just my perspective, instead of trying to decide, too many people, and, you know, too many cooks spoil the soup, or whatever it is. So, anyhow, it's moving along, it's a moving target. Thank you. And in the back end, are those your minutes, right? Did you sign?
I signed the one, this one, exactly, I always got to sign.
Okay, we'll get those.
Yeah.
What's that one, just, that one on the side?
No, it's here, the one.
We can group them together as long as we're all at the meeting, if you want. Okay, approve the minutes, April 14th, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd. So, you can group them together however you want, as long as we're all there.
One of us is going to have to make the motion.
Oh, that's right, she's not here.
I see it. Uh, I vote to approve the aforementioned events.
Okay, was everybody there?
Yeah, we were all here for those meetings.
Okay.
Um, no. April 14th, everybody was here.
Okay, that's a good way to check.
March 24th, Mary was not here.
Okay, so that doesn't.
Doesn't matter for Mary.
I understand, I'm just reading it. May 5th, everybody was here. May 19th, everybody, Mary was not here. June 2nd, everyone was here. June 9th, everyone was here. Should say that they were all 2020. June 15th, everyone was here. February 18th, everyone was here. April 14th, did I not even read that one?
April 14th, yeah.
Yeah, I already read that one. Mary was not here. June 15th, everyone was here. June 23rd, everyone was here.
Okay, so, everybody was here. And one of them, no, we got to pull up the two executive sessions, three executive sessions, one from April 14th, one from June 15th, and one from June 23rd, because we'll have to vote them differently.
They're all in the back, I believe, above.
Yeah, did you see those? Those are the exec sessions?
Yes.
Exec, exec, okay. So, go ahead, Peter, make the motion for those.
I did.
Okay, so, Peter made a motion for the, for the regular session minutes, okay? For the following dates, the 14th of April, May 15th, May 19th, June 2nd, June 9th, June 15th, June 23rd, okay? So, do I hear a second?
Alan will second it.
Alan will second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 500. Okay, now, I'm sorry, it's 401 with Judy abstaining.
Right.
Okay, sorry. All right, so now we have the executive session minutes of, of June 23rd, June 15th, April 14th, and February 18th.
Okay, move that the board approved and hold the executive session minutes from February 18th, April 14th, June 15th, and June 23rd.
Okay, good. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Yes, there is. I would like to add the one for the, for June 15th, correction or amendment, whatever you want to call it, what's your correction? It has to do with myself, or I should say, Town Administrator Sullivan, Turnboon, myself being appointed to have discussion related to gravel removal with ADM. All right, so, we'll have to hold that out.
Okay, I'll hold that out, my motion, that was.
15th, Jim? We're going to take it out, we'll deal with it in the executive session, okay? Right, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay, that's no problem. All right, so, so now, you're going to do just June 23rd, April 14th, and February 18th.
Correct.
All right. Motion made by Peter, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Judy abstains.
And Judy abstains, so it's 401. And you what?
I didn't vote yet, but yes.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to vote. Okay, so you have all, and this one's going to go back into the executive session in order to have the minutes changed. Okay? Next up is reorganization of the board. Before we do that, I just want to thank everybody for being so nice this year and making this, although it was a tough time in some times with all the minutes with the COVID thing and everything else coming along, I think we've had a good and successful year. I am proud as punch to have been able to serve all of you. I hope that, um, you know, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, and I just want to thank you all for, for being who you are. You're always great, and, you know, these meetings, although sometimes can get a little contentious, they usually, we work it out, and we work it out like, ladies and gentlemen, and it can't, it really can't be any better than this. This is, you know, it's too bad, I always said this a bunch of times, that Washington could take a lesson from us, because this is the way it should be. It's okay to hide new issues and so on, but the most important thing is the town of Wareham, and we have to vote what's important for them, and I hope we've done that this year, and again, thank you very much. All right, next up, reorganization of the board. Okay. All right, want to finish signing that fucking?
We, just, if you could hold on two seconds while we get some of those things.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, just give you a couple seconds. So, I had to sign this, this was an releasing of 2D, I voted last week, and that's going to get notarized at the clerk's office, so it's fine. Pardon this one, sign?
Yep. Yes.
Who should we recognize?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that Peter Tittlebaum, the appointed or elected Chair of the Board of Selectmen, should be the Deputy Mayor.
Okay, motion made by Judy, seconded by, I'll second it. Motion made by, I'll second it, and so, um, we'll take a vote. Do you want to do a roll call, Wes? Okay, let's do a roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Mary, I mean, Mary, sorry.
Yes.
Judy, me, yes, Jim?
Uh, sure.
Okay, Alan?
No, the reason I'm voting, though, is we're out of sequence. We have proceeded and we followed for at least the last 18 years, like, the year and seven years before that, and I feel it was very contested, and I'm not happy.
Okay, so, 401.
410.
Uh, 410, sorry.
410.
410, sorry. Okay, so, Peter, congratulations, you are now in charge.
Yeah, great.
What do you want to say?
You are the meeting guy.
First off, I would like to extend my congratulations to Chairman Troppiano for the past 14 months of service as Chairman, and four of probably the most difficult months one could imagine, between March, April, May, and June, dealing with this virus, dealing with the shutdowns, dealing with having to come up with a new fashion of meeting. You know, Patrick has always had a great interest in health matters, and I think frankly, the board was damn lucky we had him at our head during this time. I'm going to be leaning on him heavily for those considerations, because frankly, that's not my area of expertise. And so, don't think you're getting out of that kind of work. You know, it's, it's an honor, and I appreciate it. And I think Patrick deserves a round of applause for what he did.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve Judith Whiteside as clerk.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Mrs. Whiteside as the board's clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, I will also do a roll call vote.
Is there much discussion?
Yes.
As Selectman Slaven had indicated, there was a process in place where normally, there was a sequential appointment to the different positions. And I was told that last year, I was sitting over there in the corner, so I went along with it. And looking back, it's basically been, well, it's occurred, and then people get to learn the material and the process as they move up the ladder. So, Mary decided not to run, and she probably would have been Chair. When I was in line to become clerk, I believe that's how the sequence would have gone. Now, I see no reason why I could not be clerk, but form of duties, because otherwise, I'm not going to have the opportunity to learn some of the intricacies of what the clerk does, and then hopefully be able to ascend to the chairmanship the following year, to follow the sequential pattern in the non-written rule or order that the, that the board has been following for, I don't know how many years. So, I think I ought to have given that opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, and, you know, you're absolutely right, that that is the typical fashion that the board operates in. You know, it's not a policy, we don't have, you know that, it's not in our policy manuals, it's not in our billies, it's not in our chart, it certainly has been a tradition. And, you know, you spoke very well about the reasons for that tradition, which are to get on the board, get your feet wet, get into the clerkship, and then get into the chairmanship. You know, this is a tremendously tough.
I don't agree with that, but go ahead.
Tremendously tough personal decision for me. No, it is.
No, 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 I thought you were going to say something else, David.
You know, I, I think the, the reason that I would vote for Mrs. Whiteside has more to do with the fact that we have extremely inexperienced person in the office. Mrs. Whiteside, you know, in addition to having been a clerk previously, has also worked for many years as an educator. And, you know, really, the tension, the dynamic here is between, you know, what we should do for you that's fair as a selectman who was elected by the people for this board, and what I believe would be best overall for the town.
Yeah, and you know what?
And that's a tough one, Jack.
I, I understand, and Mary was kind of terrain, and she did it last year, and she learned, and we had the same people in the office. So, I mean, what are your decisions? I've said my piece, and if we're not going to follow process and protocol, then, you know, that, so be it, and, you know, hopefully it'll work out well, but we don't know. Thank you.
You know, I, I just didn't want you thinking that you were being dismissed out of the pan, because that is far from the case.
Well.
As we saw here tonight, you know, you've got a line for detail, you know, you were really strong on, on issues with the, with the Mondays and everything else, you know, you drove a lot of that discussion, you're the one who actually.
That's all well and good, as long as we don't go back to following process and protocol the upcoming year, we just go at it and pick them.
Okay. I still have to finish my roll call here. Jim? The motion was for Judy to be clerk.
Right. No.
Alan?
No.
Peter, yes. And again, I regret that, that we've got these outside considerations that are pushing in on us, so.
Thank you.
Do you, yeah?
Me?
I don't vote yet, but you vote.
Didn't I call you?
No, I think so.
Oh, I guess it's not done yet.
Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
How it's done, 300. Okay, we have a motion, the last one tonight.
20.
Motion 20.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500. Good night, Wareham, be safe. And have Patrick for it.